It's six o'clock, everybody, so I'll call us to order for this evening, it's December nineteenth, that was sorry, January, I'm excuse my, January, the eighth, first, second, second January, second meeting of the Washington City Council. Energy spend on technology that seems to always give us a little run for our money with the top people. Okay, welcome back, everybody, and having you here. And we have a guest speaker today, many of you know Jenny Slagh, who's spent a leadership role in Henderson-St. Elizabeth for many years, and is now helping to lead an initiative, honored of Jenny, but I've been able to participate in, and there's been lots of participation from the county, and Jenny will kind of give an update about where that is headed.
Thank you, Emily, and I'm going to pass all the, pass these down, go ahead. Good follow along with me using our handouts. Well, good evening, Waukesha City Council members and anybody online. Thank you for the opportunity to share with your representation about a new initiative that we believe will positively impact the residents of Waukesha and Kellogg. The Waukesha Kellogg Age Friendly Collaborative was formed in August, just this past August, as an important strategy of the Community Health Improvement Plan that is jointly created by the Waukesha County Public Health Department and Guderson-St. Elizabeth Hospital and Clinics, along with many community partners. For the past nine years, our Community Health Needs Assessment, along with a lot of community feedback, has identified senior health to be a top priority, and this is due to the aging of our population, you're seeing the percentage of those over sixty continuing to grow in our county and counties across the country. Through the hard work of a Waukesha County Senior Action Teams, we have been really working hard in the last nine years to expand access to a variety of programs and resources that are enhancing the quality of life and the well-being of our senior population. The recent establishment of our Age Friendly Collaborative and our official membership in the AARP Network for Age Friendly States and Communities are our first steps in advancing the, our commitment to identifying opportunities to make our community more livable for people of all ages. The collaborative, which is still forming, and we're always inviting your people to join in, is made up of over fourteen local and regional agencies right now, as well as many engaged community members. The focus of our work, on the other side of your handout, is to improve the quality of life within eight domains of livability, and those eight domains were really founded by the World Health Organization, and then adopted by AARP's nationwide effort to create age-friendly communities. So I'm going to briefly go over those eight domains to get an understanding of the breadth of this work. Outdoor spaces and buildings, it includes indoor and outdoor spaces where we can gather, green spaces, accessible buildings with potential for elevators and zero-step entrances, staircases with railings, transportation, we know that has always been a great need in our rural area, offering mobility on friendly streets, safe walking and biking paths, accessible and affordable public transportation. Housing, homes modified for aging in place or house options that are suitable for different incomes, ages, and life stages. Social participation, opportunities to socialize, and the availability and accessibility and affordability of social activities for seniors and people of all ages. Respect and social inclusion, intergenerational gatherings for all ages to learn from each other, honor each other, and feel good about ourselves. Work and civic engagement, opportunities to work for pay or volunteer skills to engage in the civic life in our communities and have a place to convene and connect. Communication and information, information shared through a variety of methods, since not everybody is Tex-ati or has access to smartphones and internet access in their homes. And finally, community and health services, affordable and accessible services, health and community, and assistance nearby for home support, help with chores, rescue care, and so on. So that is really the breadth of what those eight domains of livability are all about. So how will our collaborative reach our goals? Well, we're following a program cycle that was established by AARP, and communities across the country, we're not alone, there are over seven hundred communities now across our country that are focusing on age-friendly initiatives. I failed to look at the recent numbers for Minnesota, there's quite a few Minnesotanist communities that are engaged in this work as close as Rochester and Orinoco and others nearby. So the program cycle, we began by forming a collaborative, and we're still in that process of forming. We're inviting individuals that are interested in this work to join us. We also, as I mentioned, enrolled and became an official member of AARP's network. And just really this month, we are kicking off a community education and awareness-building campaign, that's why I'm here tonight, to raise awareness about this collaborative, what are purposes, who is involved in the collaborative, what our hopes are for our community, and how we might work with other organizations, partnerships, committees that are already working in many of these domains already. What we hope to do is in the early part of 2024, we will conduct a priority assessment. And basically, what we're going to be asking our community for is to help us prioritize, of those eight domains, one of the most important domains to focus on first and address first, because we don't, we know we don't have the capacity to address all of them at one time. And so from that priority survey, we will then conduct some listening sessions to dig deeper into those top domains and learn more about what the concerns are, the needs, the gaps, what the assets are that we can strengthen and work toward. From that, from that data and from the information that we learned from our community members, we will build and develop, and develop an action plan, and that action plan will then be implemented over the next few years. This isn't something that we know we're going to get completed, one year or even two. It's, it's most like a five-year cycle that will continue. What we will do as we develop our objectives and strategies, will establish ways to track our progress, evaluate what's working and what's not working, so that when we repeat this cycle again in a few years, we're not, we're learning from our, from our mistakes, and we're growing, and we're building and progressing as we go along. And so that's really the program cycle. So why am I here tonight? I am here to share this information with you, and I hope that you will share it with other individuals that you work with, family members, individuals in our community, share what you've learned tonight, so they're aware of it, because when we conduct that priority survey, we hope to get great feedback and good participation. We hope you will all participate in that survey. It will be provided digitally, as well as provided in settings where it's easy to reach individuals that might not be able to take an online survey. And then if you are so inclined, we welcome you to join in on our collaborative meetings, whenever you feel you'd like to, to learn more. We meet every Wednesday, the first Wednesday of the month, at two in the afternoon at the Public Health Department, and we always make a virtual option available through Zoom. And so it's something that if you're, you're not interested in participating on a regular basis, but want to touch base every now and then, we welcome you to do so. So that's the brief presentation. Does anybody have any questions?
I, I, as far as the survey goes, I know it's hard to get it out there in a community. Are you guys working with like some crap and stuff to, so they can get the survey out to their managers?
We will definitely be working with a variety of agencies locally to make sure, we're even looking at having like survey sites where we can assist individuals to complete it. It's going to be quite simple, because right now, we're just going to be asking them to identify the most important domains. So there will be some education involved, so we might set up shop at the library, add community meals at the grocery store, so we can reach out to those that are, that are not able to take the survey online.
Because I, I know as one that lived up there, a lot of the elderly people were left out because they don't have access to the internet and so forth, and they never knew about these surveys until they were done.
They were done, that's true. And I know AARP has offered us some wonderful resources and thoughts in terms of recommendations for making sure you're reaching vulnerable marginalized populations that don't get out of our home bound, so we will make sure we pay attention to that.
As long as it's shortened to a point two, because they just don't want to go all fifteen-minute survey.
Yes.
That's, they have to write out the two paragraphs answered to.
We will make sure that is round. Thank you for that question.
That's been my, that's been my repeated desire, so now, I won't say I think, I'll say Dean and I think. They should be short as possible, as lovable as possible, then you get the biggest participation.
Yeah, and, and I also, you know, welcome, and after you've had a chance to monitor and review the handout, if you have any questions or recommendations or thoughts or ideas, please pass those on to either Emily, to myself. We are in the process through our campaign, we're developing a webpage, we're developing a Facebook presence, so we will have some social media presence within our area, and more information will be available as to how you reach out and make contact with the members. Well, thank you so much for the time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, now I see Jenny giving a presentation, now I get to go do the presentation of the auxiliary week from today, so.
I'm going to leave though.
Wonderful, okay, hey, sounds good, thank you so much, thank you Jenny. Great, all right, and we have a video online, so that I, it's been a staff.
We have Jeff, and we have a couple people online.
So this is the time for public comments, if you're online, I hope you can hear me. Feel free to just state your name and your address for the record, and share any comments you'd like with council, we try to keep comments about, if we can, but it's a light crowd, so if you'd like to say something, please go ahead now.
I just want to say that down here in the villages, that the speak, the guest speaker, everything that she talked about is covered in this community.
Yeah, yeah, very deliberate planning and development for aging across the entire lifespan, yeah. Jeff, you might have to join the group, you got the first Wednesday of the month free.
Better you than I, Jeff.
No, it's a great group, so it's County Public Health, SHIP is at the table, our aging initiative folks, Elder Care Network, and it's really a good group, people that I don't necessarily run into, even our County Public Health, well, I just don't necessarily run into those folks in community, so it's been really well organized by, especially by Jody, Jeff, and then Jenny, so, all right. Any changes or additions to the agenda, and Dean, you had a request?
Yeah, I want all these.
We'll take the fees out of the consent agenda, anything else?
I'd like eight point eight pulled, and also Caroline, are you taking out eight point nine?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's been full, eight six.
Just an update for council, I was supposed to write the federal procurement policy. Now that we have enough federal money, we actually need a separate set of financial policies. Somehow that got pushed on the list, and I just, I just blanked on it. So the auditors need that in place, but I want to be careful about that and not commit to more than what we need to commit to, so I do want to take some time of that. You know, give ourselves as much flexibility while being in line with whatever the federal requirements.
But that wasn't on the next, was it?
No, I pulled, I took it out, but it's in an older version than people saw.
But we definitely want, please schedule out, we want the quotes for when to endure this, not, and then the other one was the application for transportation alternatives out, or are those staying in? There's two really.
Wasn't all nine, so.
The whole nine, okay, so the current nine, if you've got your live agenda up, stands, okay. Okay, anything further? Okay, with that, we have on the consent agenda, the July, the complimentary compliments from twelve five, permits for gambling alcohol for St. Felix, the Bobcat, Poo Cat yearly trade information, the Fairmore gambling application, the appointments for twenty twenty-four commissions, the resolution in support of application for transportation alternatives for WK Trail, and the resolution in support of an active transportation grant, do we have a motion? Oh, we got a motion to approve the consent agenda from Tim, second from Brian, any further discussion? And paddle roll vote, says Jess, online.
Jensen?
Yes.
Water?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Woodley?
Yeah.
Fred Martin?
Yes.
Sella?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes. Okay, no public hearing tonight. In general business, we do need to elect a council president, Tim has been our council president for the past year. I try very hard not to be absent, but we need somebody in my absence to be willing to serve in a chair role for council meetings, either regular or special. Anybody wants to nominate themselves or another?
I'll make a post for Brian.
That was big.
That works, I saw it.
We have a motion for Brian from Dean, and a second for John, you accepting of that one?
Yes, fine.
All right, very good, Brian accepts the nomination, we will roll call vote.
Woodley?
Yes.
Fred Martin?
Yes.
Sella?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Dren?
Yes, thank you, Brian, very much.
Mayor?
Yes.
Could we, should we circle back and talk about like your presentation and the committee report?
Yeah, all right, I took over my own, thank you, gosh, all right, never mind, I was just thinking about those changes, and I got onto those changes, so back to our regularly scheduled program. So I don't have a big presentation, it just was a wonderful year, I really reflected a lot, you know, where we're away from, away from all this flurry of activity at the end of the year, it's really grateful to staff, really grateful to staff that were on all through the holiday, and Ryan said EMS was really busy, and that's never taken for granted, I know there's a lot of new residents kind of asking about what these sirens mean, and it's clear that the public who lives here knows what those mean, and really appreciates how important that service is to our community, so thank you for that. Otherwise, would be excited to kick off a new year, we had another developer tour today. I pondered over the time off, whether they would all really come back after these nice tours, but they have been responsive, for the most part, to Caroline, so we're expecting multiple applications, and either Caroline or John can say more about that. But the, another good tour today, reputable developer that has purchased the Pine Island property that we think is compatible with our needs, and also some recent development in Rochester, working with Ternville K, actually, so just continuing to get those, those letters of interest, and then leading to good questions, which sounds like they're going to lead to some applications, we hope, they've got their ducks in a row. We, we started at the last minute, felt like we, we can't not be responsive to this, this level of interest, and I think we're doing the right thing. I did update that we shared today, and it's on their board, I let them know, we don't know really what will happen here, we don't even know what kind of response we'll get formally, but I didn't want them to learn through community conversation, this is the direction the city's going, I think we've been clear all along that those properties have been a priority for the quarter thirty, so I just, and I keep echoing that that's, that's the city's intent, and my council knows, and all that, so. Yeah, and so from, from utilities, not today, yeah.
Yeah, we just paid bills, nothing.
We didn't meet, so we didn't even pay bills.
But you have upcoming, this.
Yeah, tomorrow is the, the winter meeting for Minnesota Port Association, so that will be taking place in St. Paul. In that meeting, the topics of discussion will be bond application for additional funding for the ports in the region. That's about it, we're all, we'll talk about that a little bit, so the process is starting. It was like that.
We're waiting on someone for pressure.
Okay, I see, that's, that's fine.
No, so we're, we're going to start shortly, and it's, we're set to go. Yeah, we're going to be moving sand to the spinner.
Till the process begins.
Yeah, yep, so.
That's it?
Yeah.
County Streets Need Free?
Good evening and happy new year. Streets, about today, they approved the tool cap replacement, which was already taken care of delay. Street main, it's funny, we discussed, kind of told the council over the past couple years from thirty thousand down to twenty-five, around eighteen thousand, and then back up to twenty-five. I gave them a list of projects over the next couple of years, and kind of hoping next year to take that thirty, and you know, depends on where our budget is, to add another thirty thousand, I don't know if we can start ship sealing the streets that were done in twenty thirteen, and a bunch of other stuff. Parking lot maintenance, Spikes Park, Malone Park, Beach Park, downtown park, and last haven't been touched for quite a few years, and it's fire, and at the bike pass, we got bike pass that, you know, go through town, and then all the way out to the Gulf Basin and Criminal Justice Center, so they need maintenance, so it's starting to build up. So I got to start looking ahead to that. And I didn't tell them that we're looking at a two hundred thousand dollar overlay next, this coming year, if everything works out, so we're going to, I worked with Brian a little bit on that today, kind of putting together some areas and some ideas. And that was pretty much it, the streets, park board, we give them an update on the dog park down on Bailey Avenue, and we actually had some time, I got the back open in Waukesha County, and we dug in the water line. And it's like about four hundred bucks for the hydrant and water line and stuff, so we'll turn the grant to wherever. So that's done, fence, I don't know whether it looks like it's changing, so I don't know if it will get fixed in this year. Terms expiring, that's, I'll be able, athletic complex, so we talked about athletic park, athletic complex, and the park board, they kind of agreed that, if you recall, the complexes, there's a lot of things going on here, so with all the different amenities, complex kind of sound better.
Yeah.
And so we are starting to work on sign to, you know, for the, for the higher athletic complex, and then we talked about some cameras possibly, and the warming house, and then something about the pickleball courts, because the circulating is very expensive, and some of them have been damaged in the past, and so we discussed that a little bit, going to get some pricing and see what we could do reasonably, and then we discussed the play pole. I think that we are going to get a five thousand dollar donation from the Vikings organizations towards the play pole, and based out of fifty-foot play pole, and I think it's around between nine and down to the bowlers. So we'll see how much money is left in our project funding and.
What are the new ones in terms of like pole down there?
That one, I don't know how it's put in the ground, but it's been there a long time. So I mean, to try and move it, I don't know if it would be worth it. The new ones, they come with, you know, stainless cables in them, you're going to have ropes breaking, they're secure, they're locked up. So that's kind of the thought, you know. Looking to be rough, but yeah. And then discuss color trail information, Caroline updated them on, and they're kind of Tuesday after about that, so. That's it.
No, I'll lay real quick, are you guys looking at Market Street and Washington, or you go down to Hiller by Main Street?
That part is the most expensive part, so the only, the only section we have now is Market Street all the way from Allegheny, down to the skateboard park, all the way up to Broadway, which is behind the county buildings. So when you jump across the street, that block that goes down over the hill to Washington, that needs water and sewer, so when you add that in with blacktop and curb together, that's almost a million dollars.
That's good and terrible.
Yeah, and then so we're contemplating to fix that curb and storm sewer in the corner, but we might do a project in the next couple of years, and tomorrow, a couple of days, or something like that, and figure out the rest of some of these spots, because there's, there's more than just Market Street on that. Yeah, so I just came up the hill, so. We've had more water being breaks on that block going down the hill, so we don't want to put, you know.
When you redo that portion there, would it make sense to redo that in concrete, that one area, you know, going down the hill, not in asphalt? I don't know, better for it.
Yeah, but something you got shaded, and concrete is a lot different, you know, for weather. And kind of changing something in the tile like that, I don't, yeah, think of, be an idea, but. Question.
You did a great job, funny, following up too, on the public concern about the crossing, yeah, would, would that result in some back and forth with the county, is there anything we should?
Yeah, we, I passed on the concerns that we had from the person that came to the meeting, plus everything we've been dealing with for the last few years. And they had it painted down there, obviously, when they did the new road, but then I kind of went back, and I got lucky and found the pictures from Beacon, that are like twenty sixteen or twenty fifteen, and they were painted. And it's like, okay, so why did that all of a sudden stop? And I haven't received an answer back on that specific question, but they basically told us that if we want that painted down there, stop hars and crosswalks, that we have to send them a resolution, requesting it, and then they'll do it once, and we have to maintain it after that. And I'm like, well, why would we have to maintain it, it's not our road, you know, and even county's on the other side, and Dean Kirk was copying that one too, so he wants about it. But I don't know if they're changing their policy or what, so Brian, Malton Engineer, gave his wording to put in with the question, it's like, okay, why are you doing certain areas and other parts of the state and not the busy intersection?
Yeah, we didn't see what they responded, you know, that challenge is good for us to know, and then if that doesn't become our road, well, then it becomes our responsibility anyway, but. And then they also responded with the lines, because you included that comment that Dean made about the lines on the.
Yeah, Waukesha County is going to have those white lines painted on that whole section of the road in front of the grocery store, they'd help with that, yeah.
So it was good exchange, it was very good exchange, yeah. Thank you. Jenny?
We did not meet in the server.
Any gangulous updates you want to share with us?
Um.
Is he, is he timed?
Our full and position is out there till the fifteenth, I've already had a lot of interest there, we have one representation, and then at least four people who have reached out to me and asked some questions. We finished the year with seven hundred and two calls, which is up a hundred and forty to call over last year. Then our transfers, we took a hundred and three transfers this year, which is up ninety-four percent over what we did last year, I mean, we only took fifty-three transfers last year. So we didn't quite meet my goal for the number of transfers we took this year, we fell a little bit short, but our revenue goal I set for us, we almost surpassed that five hundred thousand dollars worth a month ago. So that's a good, finished our month, really busy the last eleven days, we had thirty-eight calls, so we were busy.
Yeah.
So there was a big change that I wasn't aware of, I knew that at the end of the year, which really mattered with the, with some of the transfers, but the state had a one, a legislative order for one year to allow us to use non-creminal drivers, and that ended December thirty-first, so we're working, Riley was a big help with that, getting fitness and transfers, so we're working on that to get them licensed again, so we can use them, but that was kind of a, we're really hopeful with that going forward, but, so that's a little bit of a setback, but other than that, and then we have the windows and doors on the agenda for tonight, so.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And Caroline, anything else you wanted to share with us besides your, what did you call it?
It's all, oh yeah, just that we finished up performance reviews, and we did state interviews this year, so kind of had fun just asking people what any, what is any change, do you want to see the department, since did that little in an ad hoc meeting, shares about what we've heard, but overall, that are appreciative of the, you know, pay, benefits, culture. That are appreciative of the, you know, pay benefits, culture among staff, and outlook was positive, and I think staff felt. Like it was a really good year as well, so those were good to do, and just hearing feedback from staff. Nothing else that hasn't been mentioned.
Now, we thank you for that rerouting, we'll come back to the slightly adjusted general business, you've got our president elected. I actually don't know that we get to a personnel committee, we didn't talk, we just talked about it, we didn't do it, okay, so to Caroline's point. We need to establish that ad hoc personnel committee meeting, I suppose, in January again, right?
Yeah, well, it's, you know, just kind of wanted, now that we're so close to all the reviews, just kind of wanted to share in some more details and the feedback I heard, and then. While I was doing twenty twenty-four goals with staff, I thought it made sense that I came up with some performance goals. And then we can kind of look at those and measure those, and so I would come to the group of the list and get feedback on that, so I think we're looking for three people.
I'll stand if you mind.
Yeah.
I can do it too, I can stand on it too.
Alright, good, great.
Alright, we got Jean, John, and Brian volunteering, thank you guys. We need to act on that.
Nope, or amazing.
Let's do that, we'll suggest, not present, so John, did you hear those nominees? Jean, John, and Brian have volunteered to appoint, or be appointed to this ad hoc group that hears feedback about staff and city administrator. Feedback, so we'll take a roll call vote on that. Meyer?
Yeah.
Friedmeyer?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes, again.
Oh, Jeff?
Yes.
No, he's talking, but it's not, okay, he did it again, okay, we got you, yes.
Thank you.
Laura?
Yes.
Woodland?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes. Okay, so back on, or I said, I just say, move to general business, we have the fee schedule, which was in item eight-six, do you have any? Time to kick this off, we have it.
Yeah, the only concern I have on this is that we have a new fee added to the USB flash drive. I don't think we should provide that service. If people bring in their flash drives, it would be very easy to. Share into our system. Promote this software and marriage support, so I would just take that right out. They, we can email it from Google. Use Google Drive whenever they want, but I don't think we should be throwing any USB drives on our system.
What if it was our flash drive? I think, you know where this came from?
I believe it was to get people their information, and we were gonna get flash drives, fill them and just do it.
Well, then you're gonna look at more than ten dollars, you're gonna look at minimum fifteen dollars for a flash drive, and then. You're gonna have to add it, so, but.
I'll give you an example.
The majority of people that have. Are going to use the flash drive, all the way back to Google Drive, which we can provide them a link to.
Yeah, but one of the examples is that at any moment, we could be Freedom of Information Act. If they could say, like, we want tons and tons and tons of files.
Yeah.
But it's true, you could use, I guess, Google Drive as long as.
Google Drive would be, I'll, I'll turn to the internet, because if you fire the USB drive ahead of time, let's say there are twenty gigabytes. And they're asking for forty gigabytes, well then, now you're doubling the cost to the city. So I would just totally eliminate the USB flash drive, and they can use Google Drive.
I guess my only apprehension being, do we know that's a good thing to people, but something that someone misses, just because it's available through, hope that's true, speculative, but let's say somebody wants to miss employee records. Is Google Drive a good place for that? That may be something we can solve with.
Well, how much does a USB flash drive cost?
Oh, a hundred and fifty bucks.
Twenty bucks.
If I like, just make it twenty-five, and it includes a flash drive and drop it and be done with it.
I just want to make sure that we do.
It's for not our benefit, it's for somebody else's, who cares?
Yeah, but it says you're gonna have, let's say, a minimum of ten on him.
Well.
You can get it right.
None of us said it can.
To me, yeah, I'm sure there's a timeframe within which you can sacrifice the.
One of you can get flash drive, the best buy is twelve million.
Yeah, but I don't think.
A one G A. A one.
I mean, regardless of. Regardless whether it's sensitive information, a USB flash drive is more secure than Google Drive.
I, yeah, I didn't get background on this, but I do, I do consider digital copies of sensitive information too.
Well, if I, if I come in and I want a USB flash drive with digital copies, and there's nothing preventing me now.
Yeah, you'll yourself, yeah.
Sharing on many, so Google Drive would be the. I'm just trying to set the city at all costs here, so.
So any further information requests would be public information anywhere.
Yeah. What I've learned is that anyone can add a Freedom of Information Act, but they have to go through a specific process, and they have to. Pay us, I believe, per.
Like written question help record, yeah.
Yeah, so it's not just that you get free information from the city, you have to go through a process, but theoretically, they can ask for sensitive. Employee records, which I was digging into this once, and I was surprised at what could be accessed, but I think if people go through that. We want to be cautious to, I guess.
Satisfy the law and make sure that they did this in a format, you know, as you pointed out, easily distributable. I was thinking, for my information as an employee, if somebody was requesting, how would I want that handled, you know?
Well, I don't think you'd want a new USB or.
Right, that, I didn't, I didn't, I haven't thought about a USB drive in about fifteen years, so I'm gonna.
Table this and let me look into it, because if, if someone was gonna go through that process, people may just want them only to have. Access to photocopies or printed information as. Ours and expensive as that may be, that's not something, well, you can still scan it, there's, yeah, but.
So you want to table just the one item?
Just the USB flash drive, and we'll get, we'll look into if there's any legal recommendations on, is Google Drive okay, or, you know?
I'm telling you right now, Google Drive is no more secure than the USB. Or it's more secure than the USB. But the information still wouldn't be altered, I can do, regardless whether I have it on USB or on Google Drive, or whatever, I can still take that information into the public. To anyone I want to, so I'm just saying, don't make it so evil, and.
And that's kind of, I had the same thought, but just with regards to Google, so. Yeah.
And one of my concerns is somebody coming and asking for you copies and. Let's say we have new staff numbers or whatever, and all of a sudden they are handed a USB, and they just throw it in all painted, you know, not a, not a good thing to happen, so.
Okay.
But I'll make sure to know who the rest could involve.
Very good.
That's second.
First from Jean, you mean a second from Tim, any further discussion? We'll call a vote.
Woodland? Yes. Friedmeyer?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes. Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes. Good, good cautious thinking. Think, you know, with regards to your comment about maybe you only get a, I'm pretty sure there is a requirement that.
Yeah, so.
May have additional, but then that's different rules.
Nothing, just a little more information, but it's, it's not the Google Drive that they use, it's called Google Vault.
Right.
For.
Protected.
Yeah, for government.
Okay, so maybe we look into Google Vault.
Google Vault.
Okay. Point taken, we don't want to accept anyone else's flash drive and plug that into our computer, so that, that is a reminder. Like, if, if we even afford it, needs to be the city own purchase flash drive.
Taking less than five hundred dollars per, to disable our system.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks for pointing that out.
Okay, so back to the other item, vote of consent, which is the window and door replacement, so you've got this item described in. In the consent agenda, so we have three quotes, did you have any particular questions, Jeff, and you want Tony to run through it for us?
I just had some concerns about the recommendation to go with the local ramers. I read through the bids. The all craft exteriors, they had a thirty day guarantee on their price, so that's all you're gonna, that's gonna be the price you're gonna pay for it. They were very specific on the type of windows and type of doors that were going to be installed. They also were very specific on any warranties and all that for this product, whereas the, the local bid, you know, they didn't specify. They said there was somebody from Hayfield Windows, but you had no idea what kind of windows they're putting in, nothing about any warranties, nothing about. They said maybe we can get it in spring or summer or twenty twenty-four. I, you know, I know we like to go local, but in this case, I would like to, I'd make a motion to go with the all craft exteriors bid.
All second.
Any further discussion?
Ryan, do you have any comments?
Just the local bid with the recommendation on the county's commission.
Was there a discussion?
That it was close enough, and that's with a purchasing policy that it's coming on outside.
Yeah, and I think the other thing that we pointed out on the local was the concrete on the outside of the front garage was going to be repaired as necessary, and all craft wasn't on that bid. So I'm not totally sure, I think Ryan knows, like, Vegas only difference that I remember we discussed, that's kind of why we love them, but.
But also, the local bid, they said that, well, material prices are probably going to go up, so when we order this, so we'll have to rebid this, re, give you estimates anyways. We know prices aren't going to go down, so, I mean, the local bid's gonna end up more than what they are quoting now.
Ryan, you think we could negotiate to get the concrete included? Say what, with the other, the?
With all crap? I'm gonna ask him, I don't, I don't know if that's something that they do.
Yeah, so it's gonna go up that way.
I see this language as giving us direction, it, you know, it says whenever reasonably possible, purchase will be made, not purchase can be made from local vendors, so it feels like it's a little bit like directing us to that unless there's a big discrepancy, but. That's how I see that.
Oh, yeah.
Can we ask the local bidder to kind of tighten up their bid a little bit? Tighten up, put some parameters in there, of course, can I have a little?
Yeah, please.
I didn't, I didn't work with this, Ryan did, but I know, I know what Jeff's talking about. All Craft is like a pretty big corporation, and they got everything, you know, buttoned up and in the contract and stuff, and. And Rudy and Jeff are part of small town, you know, they just write down, okay, this is what we're gonna do, they make it pretty simple. We've had to do good work in the past, we haven't had any trouble with them, but that's all I just wanted to say.
They've done the work. They've done a lot for me, and, and whether it's done work for the Eagle Center, you know, as a local contractor, there's no problems.
They've done work for the first. Then all craft, you know, donated towards the ambulance market, so kind of.
We have motion a second, this must be the discussion, which I'll probably vote, so if, would a motion was for an all craft? Bid for the second. So.
Oh wait, yeah, I'm sorry, the volume keeps going somewhere, okay, Jeff, can you, it looks like it's on. Oh, you're muted.
What do you want?
I'm gonna vote high roll.
Yes.
Warren?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Meyer?
Yes.
Woodland?
No.
Uh, Friedmeyer?
No.
Duran?
No.
I'll make a vote on the ground.
We got a motion to, we got a motion by Jean, a second by Jean, any further discussion there? Again, I guess, I guess I'd love clarification, because I haven't been on for a long time, that, that language feels like it guides us to do this, so I, yeah, they have a motion a second?
Warren?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Meyer?
Meyer?
Yes.
Sala?
No.
Woodland?
Yes.
Friedmeyer?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes. Okay. So that, that takes care of general business, our donations are always a wonderful way to end. In January. Many donations are always to the library. So we have for approval, in memory of Gary Kennetts, I believe, those ten dollars in the library, I always go over. In memory of Beth Hager by Kathy Gary, one hundred dollars, in memory of Beth Hager by Wendy Briner, forty dollars, in memory of Judy. Boothstein by Kathy Gary, one hundred dollars, two hundred and fifty dollars for John C. Money, one thousand dollars from Linda Teney, one thousand seventy-three. And a dollar's maybe a sense of events in the library, for the dog park, from Bruce and Priscilla Wyden, one hundred dollars, for the Washington Athletic Complex, five hundred dollars from William Watanjuusen. One thousand dollars from the Bank of Alma, and a spending donation from Neil Wilson, we have a motion approved, we don't have to lose.
Sorry.
With a motion.
And a second, we'll call a roll call vote.
Woodland? Yeah.
Friedmeyer? Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes, sir.
Duran?
Yes. Thanks again.
Yeah, they are donor lists, I don't remember the Bank of Alma, so that's.
I thought that was a plus size, too, which is great, and I just want to thank everybody who stepped down or retired off of commission, and we really appreciate that, and the Ryan new. With involvement, we're still, we have some vacancies on, we have vacancies on ambulance and on heritage preservation, and we have two vacancies, I think, so if you know anybody good, please urge them to reach out. You know, Ryan to hear about what the commission does, or Wendy to hear about HPC, we'd love new faces, or people who've done it before and want to return, so. And then financials or any mail, okay, financials will come by email, and any other announcements from the bank? That would then are in the water. Second, and Tim, they were. I think that's probably. Alright, thanks, everybody. Okay, I hear it's Michael's campaign. The commercial building, they think it's for warm, maybe smothered, unless it's. When you raid, like, our stairs, like, no one's coming from over there. All the way down. Whereas I.
President, we hope to have a good day.
So you, you. Hard to see, or nice, or, or, or. And they, they don't look back, they're, they're, that's their color, but color panel, they said, they aren't, they're being quiet, and they aren't, they're, that's why it's so nice to do. An example.
Did you know you were a part of it?
I guess you better not ask, okay.
You don't want to.
And then it's that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. All right, it works.
That's right, it's somebody.
We got some time, we can do it, and the other call was very, very strong, it's like twenty-five hundred, city call seems like a little low.
It does to me, too. I imagine what they love, but they did it there, they're, they're, they're like, hey, so.
Yeah, one ball, I have that for you. So, but, but my name is, it's, it's, it's a little blue.
I, I actually just had multiple. So, it's good?
No. Like an ass, why do you think I want to do this? A small attitude, just go, like, in Florida, maybe, warm, and then I didn't find you a warm place.
He said, very good. Riley said, we just went to Hills Park, yeah, so then I'm like, I am sure, and sure it followed really well, I studied all about. Walking.
I don't get it, I can bring a weight, I'm anxious, but it's fine, I'm on. No, it's more, same to this, like, I'm like, it's.
She's, um, very, it's been fast, I'm sure. I've never looked at, in my, I've only, only eight days. And just, you know, I don't, this has been.
Why?
I wish, I, I don't. I, 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 you know, I'm overreacting.
Yeah.
I think it's all, I don't think they can, I don't think they can say like, I'm not, we've done a lot of. Something there.
Tyler, you're coming with me to the store, it's in our hands, no one can else, so we all want to participate.
For.
Because you know what it is, but if it's not everyone's liking, then you don't, then who chose it?
It's not.
Tyler and I will be, I'm like, I think eighty four, that's not long.
I thought they were doing a really good job picking their colors, but they like.
And then I think, I think the conference.
I like it, you know.
For here, I just want, I don't know that I want all booths, just 'cause I like that people are voting.
What they did was, Jeff, something like them.
I would say it's true.
They flash all.
You see, you know.
Good. When you be over.
Yeah, that's what is tough, because like I said.
Oh, yeah.
There's a.
Good.
Okay, so I'm gonna do a little, maybe I'll do a little research, but Ryan is ready to think, what do they know, so.
I mean. Yeah, we, yeah, we got it.
You've got it.
What was?
If you buy whatever.
Oh, right, exactly, your story.
So tomorrow.
Yes.
I think with respect to. People are the, the NFL, like.
Yeah, we decided we were going. We're good, we got.
But they're.
So.
Yeah, right, right, harvest roots, so that's priority and then. Yeah.
People.
Uh huh.
I can't, this time I'm around, which is fine.
Yeah. I think they put us on line of mouth.
Yeah, that's it, right. That's it, I won't be sharing. Well, maybe if there were any Eagles, then. Yeah.
Yeah.
I would like to. Yeah, he was aggressive. Imagine.
When I.
Done with the team.
Do you get a copy of the.
Yeah, me too.
See, those final procurement guidelines is. One of the, we can.
Yeah.
The policy for the community, but one of the.
That's right.
We will never do an RFP, we're gonna like, certainly, it's all been writing it, they were setting up, it's really a sort of random. Our P's, but we wanna do. All the bank, all the that they win, it's fun. And then I looked at the other procurement policies, and they didn't have that included at all, so I'm like, I gotta be careful, like.
Or any of the games that have been on the page, hell, don't know what's said. Better off, I'm like, give it to them.
Seem to add an extra, and I'm just like, but I don't, I know federal policy, but.
Yeah, yeah, you can know, yeah. Covid procurement is pretty much like. So. So if you have a hard day, you need a photocopy, we have to deliver.
It's just like, we're gonna give ourselves maximum, that's really in our. Would allow, and it's. Pretty, anyways, I'm just saying, like, this is gonna be a big deal, it's funny, but it'll. Where we're at with the two point five millions, we're gonna have, we're trying to figure out, we can get free money to cover our engineering costs. So it'll take a while to pay the, to the contract, to get time to the environmental review, we're not, we're, I'm gonna do now another environmental review. But we're trying to figure out if we can get free money, it came for that environmental review ahead of me.
Well, I hadn't thought of procurement, it'd be really hard to, I'll get into the weeds on our. We're not dealing with a suspect procurement. Then you'd have to get three S's from a few separate entities, even if they, even two of the S's, and sending them satisfied as well. But I, our agreement says we won't be there, so it's, it becomes just, that it's crazy being there, it's like crazy being there. So we're gonna find that my parties, those send us the potential. Bids from, or the, they're gonna have to, we have to, I feel very dishonest, because I knew.
I guess a lot of it's.
And they've been small, in small units of people we've. Absolutely backhand, we're getting votes, and having taken no intention of changing the rules, we had, we wanted a relationship, but it's like I had the proof that I was doing it.
I was right, I said, well, and they go like that, but I was in the near, I wasn't thinking about this.
Well, there's that too, that, that.
Yeah, I know, I, I didn't even think about that, I think we're covered, how they're covered, because we can't.
So, yeah, that's.
Boom, something about upgrade.
Yeah.
Hopefully we'll be.
I don't know.
It's been, it's been, it's been so.
So.
Yes. Yeah, that, that's, it's been, that's really never an issue of yours, college.
Right.
Show us we went through the piece, because most people, it was not the piece.
So I think we definitely have to know.
But uh, yeah, it's.
Our cue to engineer this bar show.
So women's like that, I mean.
But what people.
I have no idea.
So exactly, we're getting ultimately here, so I can hear, I, well, we're, we're okay with the money you have spent, but in reality, I don't agree with you, because. I, we didn't call that, since we're doing grand.
I was kinda.
We can use that hopefully to.
I need to get that call, like.
The commitment there, help. To get it off one right now.
And then I remember the, the analyst, like, and put the.
Uh, hold on, you guys, this word, I guess, like.
I can, yeah, we can go back.
Process for Bolton and Meg, I understand, like twenty thirteen or back when Chad was here. And so we did at one point hold a legitimate process, but then they've been the default engineer ever since, so.
Yeah, I guess.
We probably. I probably should tackle.
Oh, what?
And that is.
But that's a difference, not working with projects.
Yeah.
I did.
So the, the guidelines are pretty, are completely specific to them, but they're in projects.
They can find.
Follow us.
Uh, they're asking, well, question, they haven't got a name. Uh because it's, I think it's a, or they're in stop, it's an entity, does that a, you would expect like. City calls and drives, they're during, she's city, oh, I gotta.
Basically, I'm, I, I.
I, I don't really like managing this, because I don't get to see the back end of it, so, yeah, no, I just got back today and committed.